Good evening, friends on the council. Good evening, all the folks who've joined us and staff. Thank you for giving us the evening. It is seven o'clock on Monday, May 19th, and this is a regular meeting of the city council in the beautiful city of Waverly, Iowa. This meeting is called to order. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you're keeping score at home tonight, a winning hand will be six-zero. Councilperson Dranko is a little under the weather. So we'll move forward. Council, the staff has provided for you an agenda. Can I have a motion?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Welcome back to Guest Counsel Cassie Townsley for your last meeting, which is a good way, good reminder for me to say, we will not meet a week from today. It's Memorial Day, and that being a federal holiday, the council does not meet. So everyone gets the night off. Friends, the city clerk has prepared for you minutes of our last meeting on May 5, 2025. Can I have a motion?
I move approval of the May 5, 2025 regular meeting minutes.
Thank you. Second. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that passed unanimously. We'll move to item E, public hearings. This is the date, time, and place for a public hearing on the fiscal year 2025 budget amendment. The mayor and city council will entertain any comments. After all comments, the hearing will be declared closed, and the following action will be considered. Does anyone rise to speak to this? I see no one. Then can I receive a motion?
I would move approval of Resolution 2571, Resolution approving the amendment for the fiscal year 2025 budget.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? So these are not-
Did you want to check to make sure there were no oral or written comments?
That would make me so happy. Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any oral or written comments?
We do not, Your Honor.
Thank you. These are not new taxes. These are just putting taxes in the right categories as we close out the fiscal.
Majority of this is capital group projects. Fiscal year does not end like construction ends June 30th. They don't stop building, so we have to account for that, both last year's and this year's. That's the core of what you see here.
Any discussion at all? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nope, that's a roll call vote. My bad. Carla?
Wolf?
Yes.
Rafi?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Kengis?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
I heard a unanimous vote. That will take us to item F, public comments. If you would like to comment on any item that is not currently on the agenda, now is your time to rise. I see no one, so we'll move on to item G, the consent calendar. Can I have, we have five items on the calendar. Can I have a motion?
I will move approval of the consent calendar.
Second. Any discussion? Now, this one's a voice vote. So, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that passed unanimously. We're now on to item H, regular business, and we'll start with the highlight of the year, the review of the Waverly Utilities 2024 audit. Please come forward, identify yourself, and tell us all about it.
Sure. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. I'm Kelly Meyer. I'm the Director of Finance and Customer Services for Waverly Utilities. Tonight, I'll present the 2024 audit for Waverly that was completed by Aid Bailey, who's done it in the past several years. I believe everyone has a copy. For 2024, we received a clean opinion, which means that Aid Bailey considers our financials to present fairly in all material respects the financial position of Waverly Utilities. For 2024, their operating revenues for the electric utility was 41,000 higher than 2023. That is only a 0.2% increase. Revenues were lower than expected due to the mild weather and actually resulted in kilowatt-hours being decreased over 2023 by 11,400, 11.4 million. Our operating expenses for 2024 increased by 133,000 over the previous year. That also was a small increase, increased 0.68% previous to 2023. As you can see, in response to the reduced revenues, management watched their expenses and prioritized projects. We ended the year with an increase of 1.2 million to net position after the transfer of cash to the city of Waverly of 749,000. There was a decrease in overall cash of 376,000. This is after the debt service, capital purchases, and the cash transfer to the city. In 2024, we implemented GAZBIE 101 for compensated absences, and restated all previous years presented. For Waverly Utilities, this resulted in additional liability of 35,000. At the end of the financial statement is Aid Bailey's response to the government auditing standards. There are no findings of any material weaknesses in our internal controls. In addition, Iowa code states that a municipal telecommunications utility must have separate books from the electric utility. We do keep separate books, as we always have. Our auditors found no issues with the allocation of expenses between the two utilities. As for the discussion for Waverly Communications Utility, due to the competitive environment surrounding the utility, we aren't sharing a lot of information. We will, we will let you know that we're currently more than 85% market share for residential and commercial customers and adding subscribers every day. We want to thank the community for their participation and their support. You've been wonderful. If you do have any additional questions regarding the communications utility, we ask that you stop by the utility and talk to Jeff, Kurt, or myself. Do you have any questions?
Counsel, do you have any questions?
I wonder if we could hear more about the solar array project?
That would be Kurt.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. You had a question on the solar array project?
How are we coming?
Coming along very well. We are planning on starting a mobilization of the project in the next 30 to 90 days. That'd be basically contractors on site, starting the construction of the project. The solar developer themselves has been working through the financing avenues for the, for the project overall, the last probably six to eight months, and have just finalized that in the last 30 days. So should be seeing some movement out on the site here shortly.
Where is it going to be, Kurt?
So if you're coming in from heading east on Highway 3 from Shell Rock, when you get to this, welcome to Waverly, City Waverly sign, there's a drive entrance, there's a gravel drive entrance right before that sign. If you were to turn there, you'll see it right off Highway 3 coming into town. So it's, it's just a short gravel drive, and then it's, it's back on 24 acres of land. So it should be somewhat visible from the highway when it's, when it's finished. It'll be all fenced off, obviously, and such, but you can still, should be able to see it.
I forgot, Kurt. How much power is that going to give us?
Well, we're going to be generating roughly about 6.5 million kilowatt-hours a year. It's a four-megawatt array. Utility terms are kind of breaking that into homes that might serve that. That load would be about, hmm, just probably shy of about 2,000 homes of consumption in a year. So it'd be, now that's going to the grid, basically. It's not just going right into Waverly, but, but yeah, roughly about that 6.5 million kilowatt-hours.
Did you find some sheep to mow the grass under the array?
We did not. However, we are, this array is going to be kind of unique. It's the first one that we're going to, developer's going to try planting a pollinator habitat in between the rows of the solar panels. So it's a basically a no-mow, only we, well, it gets mowed down once a year in the fall, but it's only grows about 14 inches high in its pollinator habitat then, so.
That's great.
Yep.
What do you expect the lead time from when they start construction to when it's functional?
The contractors under contract have the solar array up and functional by December 31st of this year. So anticipating, they do go up fairly quick. We have the electrical infrastructure in place that will serve to the grid, so really it'd be the contractor will put the array in and wire it back to a center junction point. But once the, the ballast, which holds the solar panels in place, the arrays actually go up pretty, pretty quick. So I suspect by fall, they'll be energizing it.
Anyone have any more questions for utilities? Thank you very much, Kurt.
You're welcome.
That report being accepted, we move to item two, Resolution 2572. This is a resolution of support and commitment of local matching funds for workforce housing tax credit application for Waverly Medical Park, a limited liability corporation, for an 18-lot residential development in Stone Meadows Edition. Can I have a motion?
I'll move approval of Resolution 25-72, a resolution of support and commitment of local matching funds in the amount of $5,000 per housing unit in support of Waverly Medical Park LLC's application for workforce housing tax credits for an 18-unit residential development in Stone Meadows Edition.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
So this is similar to the project we approved before for the 40 homes that were there. This is the remaining balance of that lot. It's the same request as last time. We've already allocated the funds for fiscal '26 to this, so these is completely covered in anticipation of this possibility. If the project is not received approval, then we would, of course, not expend the funding, but this would be the finishing piece of that last 18 on that medical park side. So 40 are going.
So this money is coming from the industrial business project fund?
We're actually allocating in from capital improvement fund into that fund offset it, so we'll not take that down any further than the original 200 did.
Okay.
We have offset that.
So it's really coming from capital improvements?
Correct.
Okay.
Can you refresh our memory why this was done in the two sections, why they did the 40 and then the 18?
Actually, Mr. Fitro's here if he wants to comment to that.
Kevin Fitro. We originally, when we first came for the resolution last year, the plat was being developed at the time. We thought it was going to be a 40-unit plat, and then we started looking at duplexes, and it became a 58-unit. We'd already done a resolution for 40 and won the workforce, so this would just be another application to finish it out.
Thank you. Hey, Kevin, can I ask you just one more question? I had a question about, in your letter you wrote to us, you thought they're going to be priced around 390, and then I noticed there's a cost cap in the, you know, in the application and the program.
Yep, the cost cap moved up this year, just with costs increasing, the cost cap moved up to 325.
Okay.
But that's hard costs, so that's not, there's no land in that. There's no, no overhead, anything that's soft cost is not included in that 325.
Okay, so that doesn't even include the lot that they go on?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any more questions? Any more discussion? Any of you ready to vote? Carla?
Rafi?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Kengis?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
That passed unanimously, taking us to item three. This is Resolution 2573, a resolution accepting bid package number two for the all-inclusive playground as complete and approving final payment to soft surface, soft surfaces. Can I have a motion?
I move approval of Resolution 25-73, a resolution accepting bid package number two for the all-inclusive playground as complete and approving final payment in the amount of $2,210.71 to soft surfaces of Petrolia, Ontario, Canada.
Second. Any discussion?
Just appreciate that company's support of the grand opening. They sponsored costs for the food and everything, and it was a nice video that they-
That was a real nice video, yeah.
-made, yeah.
Anything else? Then this will be a roll call vote?
Myers?
Yes.
Kengis?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Rafi?
Yes.
That passed unanimously. Item four, this is Resolution 2574. This is a resolution accepting the city hall walls project as complete and approving final payment to Stegge Construction. May I have a motion?
Move to approve Resolution 25-74, a resolution accepting the city hall walls project as complete and approving pay request number one as the final payment to Stegge Construction of Waverly, Iowa in the amount of $67,992.
Second. Any discussion?
My only comment was there was a typo in, with regard to which meeting the increased amount was approved at. I think that was the April meeting of the extra $2,049. It was April 21st, it's going to be fifth, but otherwise.
But the work does look nice.
Yeah, it's night and day difference. When you go to the civic center, it's much brighter, it's cleaner, you don't see the seams of the wallpaper, it's well worth it, homeways, everything. Some point, we'll get this room as well, but it's nice to get the public side of it at least.
This will be a roll call vote. Carla?
Kengis?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Rafi?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
That passed unanimously, taking us to item five. This is Resolution 2475, a resolution accepting the asphalt patching spring 2025 project as complete and approving pay estimate number one as the final payment to Kluzner Construction Incorporated of Farley, Iowa. May I have a motion?
I move approval of Resolution 24-75, a resolution accepting the asphalt patching spring 2025 project as complete and approving pay estimate number one in the amount of $24,767.28 as the final payment to Kluzner Construction Incorporated of Farley, Iowa.
Second. We'll give that to Councilperson Kengis because he's all dressed up fancy in his soccer clothes. Any discussion? All right, Carla, this will be a roll call vote.
Kengis?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Rafi?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
That passed unanimously. That brings us to Resolution 2576. Now, this is a resolution appointing UMB Bank of UM Bank NA to serve as paying agent, bond registrar, and transfer agent, approving the paying agent and bond register and transfer agent agreement and authorizing the execution of the agreement. Can I have a motion?
I will move approval of Resolution 25-76, a resolution appointing UMB Bank NA of UM Bank NA to serve as paying agent, bond registrar, and transfer agent, approving the paying agent and bond registrar and transfer agent agreement and authorizing the execution of the agreement.
Second.
Thank you. So basically, we're hiring ourselves a bank to take care of the bonds?
Yes. They register them, they process them, they pay them, et cetera. It's the most redundant referendum that we do.
I know.
I don't know why I praise that way, but it's not our word.
We have some pretty redundant.
It's not our word, but it is, yes.
It's legitimate.
Yes.
Okay, any discussion?
I wouldn't know where to begin.
No kidding.
Carla, let's have a roll call vote.
Jones?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Rafi?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Kengis?
Yes.
That passed unanimously, bringing us to Resolution 2577. This is a resolution authorizing and providing for the issuance of $10,215,000 general obligation bonds, Series 2025A, and amending the levy of taxes to pay said bonds, approval of the tax exemption certificate, and continuing disclosure certificate. Can I have a motion?
I move approval of Resolution 25-77, a resolution authorizing and providing for the issuance of $10,215,000 general obligation bonds, Series 2025A, and amending the levy of taxes to pay said bonds, approval of the tax exemption certificate, and continuing disclosure certificate.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion?
So you have an estimate initially before you sell your bonds as locks in the actual levy of what it will be going forward. It's going to be, we designated it, in a sense, but you lock in everything as it's been sold now. Tax exemption is exactly what it says. We do not pay taxes. There's a formal certificate that says that. I think it's an 8038G or something like that. The continuing disclosure is just that, every year you provide information for anybody watching your bonds that looks to sell or buy them forward to make sure you're keeping up to speed with how we're financially doing. So that's, all of that combined in that resolution.
It being fairly complex, let's have a roll call vote.
Bergen?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Rafi?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Kengis?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
That passed unanimously, taking us to item eight, which is Resolution 2578, a resolution approving a three-year service agreement with Republic Services of Cedar Rapids, Iowa for the processing of recyclable materials. Can I have a motion?
I'll move approval of Resolution 25-78, a resolution approving a three-year service agreement with Republic Service of Cedar Rapids, Iowa for the processing of recyclable materials for the initial rates, which will be increased by 5% annually. Year one processing charge, $129.76 per net ton, and year one transportation charge of $71.66 per net ton for an estimated total cost of $21,000 for fiscal year 2026 to recycle materials.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? This is the company we're currently using, correct?
Correct.
Is there anything you want to speak to, Justin?
Going with the, this company has saved us a little over half of what we were paying for previously, just because we're getting the rebate back from the company. Before, we used to pay about $125 a ton. That was increasing every year as well. So do the math real quick, times 365 tons, usually, we roughly get a ton a day is what we usually figure of recyclables. So it's, it's a benefit to the city. They've been really good to work with, plus they're down in Cedar Falls, why closer than driving to Charlotte City.
And I'd like to remind the public that if you're willing to make the commitment to take your corrugated cardboard to the recycling center, the city makes money on that. So rather than putting out in your single stream recycling, if you want to save it up and take trips out to the recycling center, we actually make money from that stuff. So it's worth it for the city. Is there any other materials that we tend to make money on?
Some of the smaller ones we get, items, office paper, newspapers, some other tin, some steel, some items like that, we take them to other places. Cardboard, you're correct, is by far the largest receiving the funds back.
I want to make sure I heard you right. A ton a day of recyclable material comes in?
Yeah. If you figure it out, it works out that way, just because, you know, it's where every other week.
Yeah.
But then you figure in what's at the recycling center as well.
So it sounds like there's still a market for things. We've been concerned in the past that-
It's, when we first started this, they said they would look at our rebate every couple months, as they see fit, three months. It's been pretty much monthly. It seems like it's been fluctuating a lot. We saw some really good gains in the beginning, you know, down, now we're down to, you know, we're back to getting a little bit better than we were 12 months ago, so it does vary quite a bit.
Any more discussion?
A ton a day of recycling. Let's have a roll call vote for that.
Bergen?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Rafi?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Kengis?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
That passed unanimously, taking us to item nine, Resolution 2579. This is a resolution approving a plat of survey for parcel K located at 401 Maple Avenue, Waverly, Iowa. Is there anyone who'd like to make a motion?
I'll move approval of Resolution 25-79, a resolution approving a plat of survey for Catherine Haberman Albang to combine her empty parcel to the north, parcel ID 1006304002, with 401 Maple Avenue to allow for a building addition.
Second.
Any discussion?
I think her, I think her last name is actually Haberman. I think it's misspelled, like in the beacon, too?
Yes, and that's the, it will take a warranty deed for her to clean it back.
Change it, yeah. So. So she owns all the lots on the cul-de-sac?
Yes.
Okay.
Any discussion? All right, let's have a roll call vote.
Wolf?
Yes.
Rafi?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Kengis?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
That passed unanimously, taking us to item 10. This is Resolution 2580. This is a resolution approving amendment number one to the water smith engineering proposal for the East Gate sanitary sewer lift station replacement. Is there a motion?
I'll move approval of Resolution 25-80, a resolution approving amendment number one to the water smith engineering proposal for the East Gate sanitary sewer lift station replacement to include the replacement of the existing four-inch, four, four-inch four cast iron force main with six-inch PVC force main for an additional cost of $13,700.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? Replacing the lift station, any discussion?
We're doing design and working on it. We are upsizing it, correct?
Four inches is six inches.
Yep. Just on the Netherlands, the archaeologist uncovered a Roman wood pipe that they had 2,000 years ago. Glad we're using PVC.
We don't, geez.
It's still there after 2,000. It's pretty respectable.
I don't know whether it was still functional, but it was.
Okay, lift station. Let's have a roll call vote.
Rafi?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Kengis?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Rocky.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Rocky.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
That passed unanimously, which brings us to item 11. At last, this is the third and final reading of Ordinance 1165, an ordinance amending the municipal code of ordinances for the city of Waverly, Iowa, by repealing Chapter 90 thereof entitled Building Code, and enacting and adopting the new Chapter 90 in lieu of entitled Building Code. Can I have a motion?
I will move the, move approval of the third and final reading of Ordinance 1165, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Waverly, Iowa, providing for rezoning of parcel ID 1007101027 from R1 Residential District and R4 Residential District to R2 Residential District.
Second. We're on the table, any discussion? Okay, apparently the discussion for the first two readings was sufficient.
Apparently.
All right, Carla, roll call vote, please.
Jones.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Rocky.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
That passed unanimously. Takes us to item 13. This is the third and final reading of Ordinance 1167, an ordinance amending the municipal code of ordinances of the city of Waverly, Iowa, by repealing Waverly Zoning Code Section 100.406 accessory building and breezeway requirements, and replacing it with the new section 110.4.06 in lieu thereof. Is there a motion?
I move approval of the third and final reading of Ordinance 1167, as an ordinance amending the municipal code of ordinances of the city of Waverly, Iowa, by repealing Waverly Zoning Code Section 100.406 accessory building and breezeway requirements, and replacing it with a new section 100.4.06 in lieu thereof. Is there a motion? I move approval of the third and final reading of Ordinance 1167, as an ordinance amending the municipal code of ordinances of the city of Waverly, Iowa, by repealing Waverly Zoning Code Section 100.406 accessory building and breezeway requirements, and replacing it with a new section 100.4.06 in lieu thereof.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
That section's also called accessory building and breezeway requirements. The originality is not there for us, it is what it is.
And the one we're repealing is actually 100.4.06, but there's a decimal point missing in the ordinance.
Any other discussion? Carla, let's have a roll call vote.
Bergen.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Rocky.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
That passed unanimously, this brings us to 14, which is a first reading of Ordinance 1168, an ordinance rezoning multiple properties to U1, that is environmentally sensitive, and amending the zoning map and setting a public hearing. Is there a motion?
I'll move approval of the first reading of Ordinance 1168, an ordinance rezoning multiple properties to U1 environmentally sensitive and amending the zoning map and setting June 2nd, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers at City Hall, as the date, time, and place for a public hearing.
Second. Any discussion?
So we went through this once, almost. We got through the first reading, we had a change in staffing, second, third, unfortunately fell off. We never got it all the way through. So this is rescinding this back through, first reading, second, third, July 22nd. Have we come across this and wondered why some things weren't zoned as they should have been? So this is all those properties down the dry run and other areas that are not going to be developed, and should be seen as a U1 zoning for the dexterity of them environmental. So, yeah, this is something we came across, it never finished, so we were going to start it over, we've added a few others, and so that's why you're seeing this, and it sounds very familiar because you've seen it once before already.
So my only question was, on all the maps that we got, which, which color are the things that were changed to U1?
Kind of the light orange.
With the-
Yeah, everything that's running around, remember? You are correct.
On that first map?
Yes.
And then, like, are they the yellow boxed ones on the vinyl map? Because every map has a different color scheme.
Of course.
Or is it just the orange regardless?
I think it's just the orange regardless, it's seen as U1. If you look at the code on the side on the right, the U1 is the orange. That's all you're going to see. So we have different areas that were done at that point in time, but the U1 is the only one that's been changed, the orange that you'll see on not every map, but most of them at some point.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, it's a lot. It's a lot of areas that, you know, as we've talked about in the past, we can't build on them, they're floodlots, we have to own them no matter what to the end of time. So if we're going to have to own them, let's just zone them to a way that they can't be touched anyway and be done with it. Then there's no more discussion about can we build on this, can we not? Just be done with it. And that's kind of where we're at with this.
I remember that was kind of the question, we're looking at all these lots, it's like, okay, why don't we build here? Oh, female lot, why don't we build? So at least the lot should say you can't build here, so people know when they look at the zoning.
Yeah, you should maybe be unbuildable. Environmental is unbuildable, because that's what all these are going to be when we're done, is you cannot build on them.
Ordinance 1168, any more discussion? You appear ready to vote? Carla?
Bergen.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Rocky.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Rocky.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
That passed unanimously. That brings us to item 15. This is the first reading of Ordinance 1164, an ordinance amending Appendix E Traffic Regulations to the Waverly Municipal Code of Ordances by adding, removing, or editing certain traffic control devices. Is there a motion?
I will move approval of the first reading of Ordinance 1164, an ordinance amending Appendix E Traffic Regulations to the Waverly Municipal Code of Ordenses by adding, removing, or editing certain traffic control devices as shown in the ordinance.
Second. Thank you. You remember, we had this at a study session recently.
This is where we're officially, like, this is where I'm officially removing that stoplight on Bramer Avenue at Second-
No.
Street. No. No.
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
These are, these are just some of the additions for stop signs and changing some of the yield and a couple other items like that.
Okay.
The other one's coming.
I thought the first line was, you know, Second Street Northeast, East Bramer, removing traffic signal and adding stop sign.
We're adding some stop signs, yes, in relationship to some of this.
So we're getting there.
We're still waiting for the DOT's official blessing on everything else.
Okay.
Let's put it that way.
I won't put the cart before the horse.
Any more discussion or questions? You appear ready to vote? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Wolf.
Yes.
Rocky.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
That passed unanimously. That brings us to reports from boards and commissions, you have six reports in front of you. Do you have any questions? I hear none. That brings us to staff updates. James, your staff?
Well, along the way today, finally got here, we got full bids back on Thursday, so we're still sorting through to, before we actually name who the contractor will be. We did get six bids back, all approximately in the range that we were looking at, so we're happy with that. Then, I don't know if anyone saw or heard on Facebook, but we did have some vandalism on the golf course on Saturday afternoon or evening. Looks like some clubs were kind of swung onto the greens, so there's big divots out in places. Staff today went through that and repaired them as best they could for now. Sounds like they're, you know, pretty, you know, got them back to pretty decent shape, but it's something that we're going to see the effects for for the rest of the summer, just the divots that are taken out of the greens. Good news is, we've got pretty good leads as to who did it, so, yeah, we'll take care of it that way. So that's all I've got for today.
Which part of the course was it?
My no hole, green number five, and I believe it's three and four as well, but don't quote me on those. It was three or four greens, though, that got hit.
Justin?
With the holiday coming up, Memorial Day weekend, weekend is upon us, that means garbage and recycling will be picked up on Tuesday, May 27th. And I'd like to point out, which the mayor was graciously bringing us donuts, it's National Public Works Week, 5:18 to 5:24.
Let's bring more donuts.
Also, with the talk about PFA's have been in the news a lot lately, I just want to say that Waverly's water is safe. We do take this very seriously and the guidance from the DNR we're following. We did have a detact on one of them. Since the first article came out that EPA has announced that they're reducing the contaminant list, they're going to have to monitor now, and they gave us a longer compliance period. So it's all evolving, and like you said, we're following a lot of the news from the DNR and the guidance on what to do with the water sources. And on that, another good plus I got the last week was the bridge inspection report came, received from WHKS, and as of right now, there's no bridges that are weight restricted or limited, which is a good news considering what we've dealt with in the past. I will forward that out to all of you this week sometime. That's all we have tonight, sir.
Thank you. Councilperson Bergen?
Kind of on a personal note, this coming weekend, my youngest daughter is going to be graduating from high school. I kind of wanted to give a thanks to the Waverly Shell Rock School District for educating my three children. Just, I'm pleased with the job they did, and I'm thankful for, for the good work they've done. So I kind of wanted to just make sure to say thanks. This is my, my last one, so I, you know, wanted to just say thanks. And anyone who wants to join me for a beer, I'll be at the poorhouse after the meeting.
Thank you. No thanks tonight. Councilperson Myers?
Do quick things with it being graduation season. I wanted to add my congratulations to all the high school and college graduates, but also to encourage them all, they're getting lots of advice right now. Now they're adults, engage in your community and take an active part to make your world what you want it to be. And also, I wanted to give a shout out to Public Works and remind people that they have an awesome program whereby you can get really great mulch and also compost, although I learned this morning they're out of that for right now. It's a great service. For basically the cost of delivery, you can get really nice mulch and it helps everybody in the community.
Good, thank you. Councilperson Kengis?
Just a note that next weekend, next Monday is Memorial Day, and so Memorial Day weekend, we do have some service groups that help put up flags at cemetery, and that's always a really cool display along Forest Streets. And thank you for those that are taking that.
Nothing from me.
Councilperson Wolf?
Just a reminder that Wednesday, May 28th, at 6 o'clock in the Civic Center, the Human Equity and Diversity Commission's holding a book club with Disability Visibility by